Council collectively, an apology. Sorry, I've got the recording in progress a little late. Collectively, an apology for their conduct and a sincere effort to do better in the way they treat each other and the citizens they represent. As Chair of Council, Mayor Holston is responsible not only for her own actions, but also those of council collectively and would send the appropriate messenger for that apology. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barclay. I mean, I can see, I don't see any other hands. Is there anyone that has unmuted that? Give me a minute, let me scroll through the list here, that wishes to speak. I don't, not seeing any. And if, if you wanted to speak, go ahead and speak up. So I know you're there. I will move on. Okay, so public comment is closed. We're moving on to mayor's comments, announcements, and proclamations. I don't really have too many comments. I'd like to get, you know, on to the business of what's going on. I have some additions that I put into council business because we do have some discussion that has to happen. Other than just to comment and let you know that, you know, I sit in on all of the fire meetings every morning on their updates. They are, I am always impressed at how professional they are and also how organized they are. And just to assure the community that they are always listening to hear whether or not you're getting the information you want and changing their tactics all the time to make sure that our community is not only well protected, but is getting the information that they desire to keep them in the know as well as safe. And all those good things. So just kudos to the fires, firefighters, what's going on. Karen Thompson, I see that you're unmuted. Could you mute yourself, please? Getting feedback.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
You're unmuted and we're getting feedback on your line. Can you mute yourself?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I appreciate that. All right. So let's move on into council comments. Counselors, do you have any comments you wish to make?
I do.
I don't. Okay, who's? Bobby, I see you.
Sorry. Um, I just wanted to acknowledge, and I believe all of council received an email from one of our police officers, Val. And I wanted to acknowledge that email and the attachment that she included because it really speaks well to what we're talking about tonight. And really, I'd like to read it, but I, it's lengthy. So I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but it really talks about, you know, the safety within our community on so many levels. And it really speaks to how important our fire, our EMS, our police, and our whole public safety team is for all of us. So I would like to acknowledge that and add that to the record, if possible, please.
Were you wanting to read it? I mean, that's your prerogative.
No, I, it isn't, but it's really long. And I know we have a long meeting, so. I, no, I think just adding it to the record is, is adequate. If anybody else feels the same way as I do and feels that I should read it, I'm happy to read it, but I just think it's a very important letter and really speaks to what we're, we're working towards.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. I appreciate what you said, and I do agree with you. She, it was a very well worded letter and kind of lays some good things out. Counselor Sledoff, I see your hand up.
Yes, I'd like to, a shout out to the fire people up here at the airport. It was posted that they could give tours of the helicopters. My grandkids were in this weekend and they got to go tours of the helicopters and they give out little things for them and they let them sit in the driver's seat, everything. So they were so impressed and the fire people up there just bent over backwards to accommodate. So I'm wanting, I think that we should show some appreciation to them.
Thank you. I agree that, that was a nice thing to see that they were doing. Any other council comments?
Mayor, Counselor Hall, that's right.
Would she be able to log in? You here, Chrissy?
I'm here. Sorry for the technical difficulties.
That's okay. We're in council comments. And if you had anything you wanted to share, go ahead. Since I know you just got in.
Have we already passed public comment? Okay, well, I'll share this as a counselor comment. Did Jan Hooker speak tonight?
She has not spoken yet. Dan Barclay and Trudy, he and spoke.
Okay, um, I saw a question that came across today from Jan Hooker. I think it probably would be addressed to both Brian and possibly Chief Martin. So I'm just gonna go ahead and read it. It says, "We are broke and need to put a public safety fee on all of us. I understand that there is a problem and that it is the only way to gain momentum, I guess." The question that we should ask is, "Our police department a part of the safety fee recipient, or if it will be passed? So do we need to have 12 or 13 police vehicles if we only have three officers, a chief? And I believe one reserve uses a vehicle for LOL." And she said she was just curious why we don't sell at least five of them. So I thought maybe that Brian and Chief Martin could answer that and have some type of answer for the community for next meeting.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I saw that question, too.
Do you want me to write it to you, Brian and Chief Martin?
Oh, that'd be great if you could forward the summary of it, yeah.
Okay, I'll do it right now. Thank you.
Sweet. Chief, I see a thumbs up. You are here. Is that what you're saying to me? Okay, let's move on then. We don't have anything. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Audi.
I wanted to add one thing to this. Being as we have so many police cars, we have two of them down here getting fixed. One of them a transmission and one of them a motor. Do we really need to spend that money to do that if we have so many police cars out there? I'd like to have that answered by the chief. Thank you.
I believe I'm gonna put the motor in the car. The other car, the transmission, we already paid for. We got a transmission, then that wasn't bad. It was on warranty. So we're just waiting for another transmission that's already been paid for. The one that's got a bad motor, I don't believe I'm gonna replace.
So it's a, it's a dead vehicle, has no motor.
It's got, it's got a motor. It's just got problems, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
I do not believe we're gonna, we're gonna probably dead by now and have Robert take him to the scrap.
All right, thank you.
But I just, just to give a point out, a lot of the cars we don't use, but we've been using parts of them. We have technically right now, we have five cars broke down. So all of our cars except for two have not been purchased new. They've all been used from other agencies after they've, the other agencies have dead by them and including two, we just got free from Gresham PD as new cars to us. So it's been a struggle keeping cars running and on the road, but.
So in other words, we have our own parts department on wheels as much as possible.
Eventually, we'd like to not be that way, but it has been helpful that, to have parts because you can't, it's hard to get parts.
Right. Thank you. All right, let's move on. We don't have anything on the consent agenda. Let's go to the business from the city council. I wanted to talk about a couple things that have come to my attention this week. I received a phone call from the mayor of Springfield and alerting me to, you know, now that we have the census results, the Oregon State, Oregon Legislature is looking at redistricting. And the important thing to know about the redistricting is as, you know, the numbers in all the different communities change, the legislature looks to see how they want to redraw boundaries. We, we don't have yet the exact map that is going to be proposed, but there seems to be the possibility that the district that we are in will be redrawn and we will be included with Eugene. Currently, we are not. Mayor of Springfield, Mayor of Potters Grove, myself, all are, are feel pretty strongly that we really want to stay in a district that is mostly rural and that throwing Eugene into that mix waits it too much. What, what is being proposed is that the mayors of the smaller communities in Lane County and with their council approval, send a letter to the legislature encouraging us to remain in a small, not a smaller, but in a rural grouping rather than in a rural and urban grouping. So I don't have that letter yet. He hasn't sent it to me. He said probably on Tuesday next week he would have it. The hearings are on Thursday of next week, I believe, up at the legislature. So I wanted to make you aware of it and maybe have a little bit of discussion about it. When that letter comes, of course, I will send it each, out to each of you, you know, before I would sign it and endorse it and put it on the city letterhead. So Dawn, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I wanted to know if you could quickly explain what this districting is for? I mean, obviously, we are part of Lane County, but what are the individual districts in Lane County for?
For the numbers of legislatures that we have. So current, is currently, I think one of our districts is, is seven. It's the, it's, it's who we are lumped together with and who represents us as both either a representative or a state senator.
Okay.
And currently, we don't have Eugene in that grouping. There is a possibility that as they redistrict, we might get lumped into that. And I just think that would be counterproductive to our rural communities if we did that.
Do you think that would reduce our? Representation if we were lumped in?
I don't think it would reduce our representation. Well, actually, yeah, I guess I think, I do think that. I think what it would do is not give us as much clout. I think communities that are not rural would have more, more strength in their voice and maybe overrule us a little bit. We always see that tension between urban or between urban and rural anyway in various committees that I'm on. And I hate to see, I'd hate to see us lose any ground at all in that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Melissa, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I agree with you that I would really like to see us stay a more rural district where the rural voices are, can be heard and not be lumped in with Eugene. So I'm definitely interested in seeing the letter and have faith that it'll be put together well, and I support it.
Well, when I get that, as soon as I do, I will send it to all of you so that you'll be able to take a look at it and, and then get your feedback from it. And if you all are in favor of it, then we'll go ahead and put it on the city letterhead and I'll sign it. And I think it'll, I think our logo will go on a master and all of the mayors will sign one letter, I believe, is how they are asking to do it. And just so that you know, ElCog is helping some of the rural communities also so that we can have a, a voice that is consistent. So. Audi, did I see your hand pop up?
Yeah, it keeps, I, I pop it up and then it goes away by itself. I'm in support of keeping this rule out here, too. It gives us more of a, a voice instead of being conglomerate. Next thing you know, we'll be in with Portland.
Oh, good Lord, I hope not. Thank you, Audi. Okay, so I also want to bring up the Great Willamette Cleanup. I got an email today from Michelle Emmons, who coordinates it on behalf of Willamette River Keepers. She typically, in the past, what we have done is the city has partnered with the Middle Fork Willamette Watershed Council to spearhead and run the, the cleanup for the day. And she is asking us to pick a date. Normally, they have a date they choose, but it's easier for communities to choose the date they would like to choose so that they can get the most participation. They're also doing this under COVID regulations, so they, they ask family groups to stay together. So we don't do it all, all together. So the West Forest is doing theirs on October 9th. And so what I'm asking council is, are you interested in, again, partnering with, with the Middle Fork Willamette Watershed to do this? And what it would be would, she hasn't gotten back to me. Typically, what they've asked the city to do is coordinate a dumpster with Santa Hall. So, or, yeah, with Santa Hall so that it can be placed at Green Waters. And then we have said we would pay for the dumpster, although I'm not sure we actually ever have. Santa Hall usually dumps it for free. But then we would lend our logo. Signups would begin September 7th for people to sign up for the date in October to all come out together. Are you in favor, council, of continuing to support this effort for the, the Willamette Cleanup?
Yes, Kath, yeah, I'm in favor of that.
As long as it doesn't cost us money.
Okay, all right. Melissa, I see a thumbs up. Dawn, I see a hands up. Yes, I'm in favor. Sorry about the hands. I see yours up, too. Okay, so I'll go ahead and let Michelle know. And Chrissy, thank you. I'll let her go ahead and know that, yes, we, we would like to partner again with the watershed. And I'm kind of gonna let a watershed pick a date because they have volunteers that they're coordinating with. And then we will get that advertised. I will push it out to you counselors who have social media presence to advertise within the committee or within the community also. Thank you. And, oh, I briefly, I wanted you all to know that I received a phone call from an individual who was very concerned about our lack of, our perceived lack of masking in our community. This is an individual who called the mayor and asked why masking didn't seem to be mandated or, or enforced here in Oak Ridge. We had a nice discussion and I explained to her that we don't have the manpower nor is this a state mandate, not a city mandate, but we follow the state rules. And she was very concerned. And the reason I bring this up to you is because it's not the first time I've had visitors to Oak Ridge wonder why our businesses aren't masking or enforcing it as we move into the second round. So I just want you to be aware that people are asking that question. I'm not asking anything from you or suggesting that the council should do its own mandate for, for our community. I'm just asking you to be aware and know that people outside of our community do notice. So if there's any comments, I'm happy to take them. Mostly, I was just trying to be informative here. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Thank you. I was wondering if, considering it is a mandate from the state, I don't know. I don't know if it's still like it was the first time around where people can report things to, I don't know, was it OSHA or, I don't remember.
Yeah, so if it's, if it's an alcoholic, an establishment that sells alcohol, then it goes to OLCC. If it's not, then it goes to OSHA. You can go on the Oregon, Oregon OSHA site and there is a complaint form that can be filled out and by the individual. You can do it anonymously or you can do it non-anonymously. You can identify yourself. Obviously, you won't get a report back if you do it anonymously. I did direct the individual to that if that is what she so decided, desired to do.
That's, I was wondering, thanks.
Yeah, Audi, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I received, I think the rest of the council received it, a letter from the sheriff's department down in, is it Douglas County, down in Roseburg? They are not going to follow the state guidelines. They're refusing to do so. So. I thought I'd make that on record. Thank you.
I think we're good. Okay, let's move on then to business of the city administration. Okay, I'm hearing some, is someone needing to talk? Because I'm hearing something. No? Okay. All right, let's move on to city of the, uh, business of the city administrator. Brian, go ahead for an update.
Yeah, just a brief update. So we had recently had a CIS wildfire risk assessment done. They hadn't done one for some time because of the pandemic, but they came by and looked at the buildings. Essentially, they looked at City Hall, the WAC Fire Department and the Police Department. So they, they, they left and then shortly thereafter, days after, CIS notified us that they were going to drop property insurance on the WAC. So we engaged because of, talking with our insurance agent, it's, it was an unusual thing to do. And we're engaged with, right now with the agent that did the risk assessment and just got her actual reports as we, after we asked for them. And now we're going to engage the underwriter and say exactly what do we need to do to regain the insurance. The difficulty there is the, the property insurance covers anything if you had a fire or something like that in the repair. What they've done is remove, remove that and just all left behind just a $50,000 debris removal, which wouldn't even come close to covering debris from the WAC unless it was actually burned to the ground. So we're engaged with CIS to try to fix that situation. If there's minor things we have to do to the WAC to make it insurable, we will. Just to give you an update on that to the York Surprise. Next, COVID, we, at, in administration, we have one positive and one in quarantine. So we're starting to feel the effects in staffing. Right now, it looks like we can maintain the regular hours, but if it goes any further, we might have to actually reduce hours even more than they already are. Counselor got a report of a gray water discharge by the US Forest Service Incident Team. I've engaged with the Forest Service. They're doing an investigation. They just sent the report as I was walking out the door. So I'll review that report. And the real question is, is it reportable to DEQ? Because it, what happened is, is the trucks would come from the Hills Campsite and come up to Public Works and they were dumping it in the wrong manhole. It was the manhole that goes straight into the river. So once I go through the reports, look at their recommendations. If I have any concerns, I'll engage DEQ directly and see if they think it's reportable as well, if Forest Service is not going to do that. Lastly, you should have gotten a note that the city did receive the ARPA funding, the first tranche for the ARPA funding of 374K. And, and it's in the coffers. Following, in the, one of the two, next following council meetings, the finance director and I will bring a laundry list of possible projects we could use to fund with it. And what, what is eligible, what's not eligible. But if you read through that FAQ that I sent the link to, that really tells the story and has some pretty good, you know, examples. So that's in here. And, and that means that approximately 12 months from now, we'd receive another tranche of 374,000. That's my update. Any questions?
Audi, your hand is up. Go ahead, please.
I'd like to bring to your attention, I was down at the DMV in that little field in behind there. And there out there is all about 18-inch high dry grass. There's nothing there and it comes right up to the buildings and right up to the fence line in back. Is that something I should report to a reporting or, or can it be taken care of here, Brian?
Well, the chief's on the line, so we'll get our code enforcement out there to take a look and see who, who owns it and what needs to happen.
Okay, because it's a real dangerous fire hazard. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Audi. Dawn, go ahead. You're muted.
Thank you, sorry. My question is for Brian. I, you were cutting out a little bit when you were talking. Did you say that our insurance company dropped our insurance for the WAC or reduced our coverage?
No, the, reduced the coverage, they dropped the property category of the insurance. We still have liability. So if someone slipped from the food bank and, and hurt themselves, they'd be covered. But if there's damage to the building, either through fire, theft, vandalism, that would not be covered.
Okay. And then my second question was on the, the last thing that you mentioned, but it's actually slipped my mind right now, so.
The ARPA funding, Dawn.
Oh, okay. That didn't help.
All right, thank you. Before that was gray water discharge. Did that help? No? Okay, just checking. I'm sure you will. Brian, I did have a question about the WAC insurance. So does the, so you, you said that we have liability, so if anybody gets hurt, we're, we're okay in, in that respect. Is our, did the drop in coverage happen immediately or is it happening in 30 days or 60 days?
It's, they, they've notified us, but it hasn't, I, I don't believe it's taken effect yet. And, and given the fact we're going to appeal it, I think they'll hold it in abeyance. Yeah.
Okay, that, that makes sense, too. Also, I wanted to ask about CIS. We were gonna get some ethics training, I think, from CIS or training. And I was wondering if we had a date for that yet.
The instructor really, and it's, it's, it's actually about harassment and prevention of harassment training. The instructor really prefers in-person training, but and because of that, I, I had it scheduled for, for today, but once we realized when we're gonna go into in-person, I pushed it. But I can, I can sort of press the issue if, if we want to try to do it virtually, but I just, I like to please her if I could, but I don't, depending on how long you think we're gonna be here, virtual, I'll just bring her in anyway.
Well, your guess is as good as mine. I mean, I, I do appreciate that she would like to do it in person. So, you know, let's just be patient for a couple weeks, see what direction we go. Who knows? By mid-October, we may see, we may see it getting better. And I'm being very positive and putting out good thoughts that that's exactly what's gonna happen, but. So yeah, thank you for answering that. Dawn, you remembered your question.
Yes, I did. Thank you. I wondered, I didn't hear what you said the expected date or timeline is for the second half of the, of the grant, the ARPA grant.
It's a minimum of 12 months. It's, it will, it will be 12 months from now. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Brian on the CA report? All right, let's move on then. Do we have, we don't have any board reports, do we, Brian?
None. None.
Okay, so let's move to 13, um, our ordinances, resolutions, and public comments, um, for ordinance 937. All right, so before we move into this, yeah, there we go. Okay, agenda item 13.1. Um, so we have, we have obviously discussions to have, um, decisions to make so that we can move forward um, with what this agenda item is. Um, and I think what we'll do is, I, I don't want to take a motion at all until we've had a chance to, to do some discussions and ask some questions about this. Um, we, we are allowed to go ahead and do that without actually making a motion. If you all agree that we probably are going to need to have a little more discussion than, and then move into a more formal time. Um, so I think we'll start out that way. Um, one of the questions that we had the last time that we, um, that we met and then we talked about this was, um, the cuts that, that were being recommended by the city administrator as to what they were and how much they would be. Um, and I just kind of wanted to share that a little bit. Um, the cuts that, that have, that not have been initiated, but that have been proposed, come to a total of, uh, $561,000 that Brian has here. And so I just wanted to, to share with you what that was. I don't want to hit my mic here. Um, so in admin, um, he's proposed a total of $93,790 in cuts. Those include three that have already been taken, which is a reduction in overtime. Uh, a reduce, a reduction to 32-hour work week. And Eric's move to a 1099 status is one of them. The others are uh, materials and service reduction, professional services, non-legal, professional services, legal, and, and election expense. The next section in police, there's a $146,000 reduction. Um, and that constitutes a reduction in overtime, a reduction in standby. Um, one patrol officer, that's $106,000 there. Um, that's 55,000 in salary, 51,000 in benefits is how that breaks out. Uh, 3,000 in materials and services, uh, 1,500 in membership dues, 500 in cadet expenses, travel and training reduced by 2,000. All fun night reduced by 3,000. So that's the 146,000 out of that. Then if we go to ESF, um, there's a reduction of overtime in, what, 45,000? Brian may have to explain this because there's also a new operational model that will be put into effect. Uh, the stipends, Hazel Dell gives us $15,500 um, for stipends. So that money will be used for stipends. When it runs out, there won't be any more. And that's a maybe two, three, four month period. We don't really know depending on how many, how many people sign up. Um, so our reduction in stipends is 62,000. Uh, 2,000 in materials and services, 147,000 in people ready, and 250 for the fire med promotion. In the, um, in OIP, there's a reduction of 10,000 for equipment and maintenance repairs and 2,000 in maintenance. So that's 12,000 total. And, um, in wastewater, there's a reduction of materials and services, professional services, fuel, and new equipment, all to the tune of $2,000 each, totaling 8,000. Those reductions didn't quite make it to the number that was needed. So this also includes a loan from our utilities, from 64,960. This is, this is the package of reductions that he has recommended if we do not pass any public safety fee. So any public safety fee would begin to offset these reductions. So I just kind of wanted to start out with that, so that you're aware of it. Um, I can actually put, well, I'm not sure I can. Put it up on the screen for you. Maybe I can. Um, councillor Kenyon, I see hand, and councillor Cooper. Um, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I heard everything that you were just talking about, and what comes to my mind is that we haven't actually seen all of that in a proposed supplemental. Some of those, um, numbers I don't remember seeing. That's not to say that we didn't get a new one that I completely missed, is, is there?
To comment on that, I, I really can't produce an accurate supplemental budget until I have a revenue number. So, un- until I have a revenue number and council decides what they want for a public safety fee, if any, I really can't produce an accurate supplemental budget for you to consider.
Right, that makes sense. Um, so then just to clarify, we haven't actually seen all of that. But I actually, uh, I actually have something I want to read. I did an, an analysis of all of our actual revenues and spending for five years from 20, I mean, uh, yeah, 2015, 16 through 1920. And it shows the following in personnel costs. Administration has increased by 51%. Police has increased by 18%. Emergency Services Fund has decreased by 9%. And that's all over the same period. Yet the supplemental budget that was proposed in July, not approved, but proposed, uh, was proposing a 7% reduction in administration, 15% in police, and 42% from the Emergency Services Fund. This means that the department that costs the least from our general fund tax revenues was scheduled to take the biggest cuts. And the effects of those cuts would increase property insurance rates for everyone and every business and put our lives at severe risk. Whoops. Is this reasonable? We have to ask our, ourselves, why is this even an option? So if our city's problem is in personnel costs, why has our administration been focusing on the Emergency Services Fund all these years? Why have we allowed public humiliation against one particular family and never looked at the overall cost in all departments? In the last couple of years, emergency services and police have both taken significant cuts and are running on bare bones. We cannot afford any more cuts in those departments, and we shouldn't have to. I'm recommend, the recommending the following, which requires no fee. If we make adjustments in a supplemental budget for closer to the actual beginning fund balances, like we talked about in early August, we would reduce the $540,000 shortfall down to 287,000. The adjustments that were proposed for the Finance Director's salary that have already been implemented, yet the savings are not reflected in the budget. So this would bring it down to 237,000. Brian estimated recently approximately $100,000 of the ARPA grant can be used towards the budget, which would lower our shortfall to 137,000. The proposed supplemental that we were presented in July also included a new loan, like Kathy just mentioned, from the Water Department for 50,000, which would lower the shortfall to 87,000. This year's budget does not have a transfer from the Water to the General Fund or Emergency Services for the portion of the water increase in November of 2019 that was supposed to go to public safety, which is about 43,000. It would bring our shortfall down to 44,000. We still have not been provided the savings figures for the four-day work week at City Hall, and that would bring the number down some more. I feel confident that the remainder of the shortfall could be made up for by adding to the loan from Water or borrowing a small amount from the wastewater. Everything could be reevaluated in our next budget cycle. We won't owe the 405,000 that we're having to pay back this year to Water and Wastewater. It would be reduced to about 94,000 instead at the most. Plus, right now, the transfers from the General Fund to Water and Wastewater from the loans that we took last year are not even reflected in the budget as revenue in the Water and Wastewater Departments. So we need to do a supplemental anyways. I'm not arguing that the city doesn't need more revenue. We most certainly do. There's no reason to stop looking for ways to make that happen. But I feel strongly that the people who voted on the levy last year made it clear that they want to see the city live within our means. And yes, that means scaling back, but we need to make public safety our number one priority and not hang it over their heads. We need to interact, I mean, uh, yeah, we need to interact with and educate the community on the actual shortfall issue. We need to gain their trust by being honest and allow them to communicate with us to help solve the problem. We need to listen to them. And that concludes my statement.
Couple of comments from the city administrator, if I might. Uh, I'm not sure if your analysis included the temp help labor at the Fire Department, that's over 50, or 50% of their labor costs are temp help. So it kind of masked a little bit of maybe your personnel analysis. You know, from a macro level.
Actually, I did.
From a macro level, we take in 1.1 million dollars each year in property tax. The Fire Department overall costs 1.1 million dollars. The Police Department costs 1.1 million dollars. How anyone thinks the city doesn't have a significant problem and can just kick the can another year, I don't understand. It's 2.2 million dollars for a property tax revenue of 1.1 million. Uh, you know, it's a council decision, and, and if you kick the can, you kick the can. So, um, I'd like to see your analysis. I wish I'd had it ahead of time so I could analyze it and either agree or disagree with you.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'd like to see it too. Don, can you make sure that you, um, you get that, um, document to, um, to Brian as well as to council, so that it can be included in the record?
Absolutely. I put all the numbers from the budgets that are posted online for the actuals. I put it all in one graph.
All right, and you had a question about the 32-hour work week reduction, that's $32,119. Um, so you can plug that into yours.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so I think, you know, I appreciate what you had to say. Michelle, go ahead.
You, I just was wondering, could you give me the total for the ESF?
Who are you asking and what are you asking, Michelle?
I'm asking you, Kathy, can I get a total for what the, um, ESF cut would be throughout their department?
36,250.
Thank you.
Uh, did you say 236,000?
Yeah.
Okay, I only heard the 36.
So, um, oh dear. Um, at this point, you know, we, we have this before us. Um, obviously, every, every meeting we have said, is everybody satisfied with the numbers? And every meeting we come back with not being satisfied with the numbers. Um, so, uh, I, I really, I really am in a quandary. Um, what you put together, Don, was well, you know, well said and well put together, but it's not something that, um, I think council should or could um, look at and spend the time analyzing during our meeting um, to see what those numbers are, where they are, how that, that breaks down. Um, I do appreciate that you've done that, um, and in, in no way wouldn't want you to. But, um, so your numbers brought it down to, um, brought you down to only needing 44,000? Is that where you came with approximately?
Um, yeah, but that didn't include the 32,000 number that you just said, so it would actually be
$14,000, you think is all we really need?
Yeah, and my suggestion was we could borrow that from, uh, wastewater or water, like we're already borrowing.
Well, you know, that number is significantly different than what our Finance Director and our City Administrator have presented to us. So, um, it bears, it bears, uh, that we need to do some analysis and really looking at it. Um, obviously, you know, you're not in a position right now to, uh, sit there and go through all of it. But, uh, we definitely need to look at it and see where you came from, um, to see if those numbers are solid. And, you know, what, what has been missed on both sides? That's just way too far apart, in my opinion. Councillor, Whitney, I saw your hand up, and then councillor Kenyon, I see your hand too.
I just wanted to respond to something you just said.
All right, go ahead.
Sorry, um, we did discuss at that August 5th meeting, uh, the actual beginning fund balances, reducing the amount that we needed, which is a significant portion of what, um, the city administrator is asking us to ignore and go back to the $540,000 number.
Understand that, understand those beginning balances include the entire $374,000 of ARPA funding. You would not be able to apply to daily operational expenses.
Right, but Eric actually said that with the ARPA numbers, it would bring us up to, into 600,000. So we weren't, the 200,000 wasn't including that.
So, so what I hear you saying, councillor Kenyon, is that the numbers that you have been presenting, you feel are not accurate and are not, um, are lot, are not legitimate. And that has kind of been your, your push of this whole time. And, and you, they really need to be, um, explained. Um, and yet, we've heard them explained over and over again. So I'm, I am, at some point, we have to do something about this. We can't just keep pushing it aside.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I, I agree, and it, it concerns me that you that consistently, and I don't mean this in any derogatory way, but that your numbers consistently are so different than what I see, that, um, that my Finance Director is putting together and showing us. Um, I am open to, uh, Audi, go ahead.
Actually, it's still my turn. I haven't had my turn.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bobby. Yes. I apologize, Bobby.
So, I don't even know what to say at this point because we have people that are higher professionals that do their job and do their job well, and we're not listening to their opinions. And to me, that's a problem. Um, at our last meeting, Kathy, you had mentioned that we're having issues with getting funding for the refurbishment of one of our wells. That's a big deal. Uh, you know, we're not moving forward, we're standing still constantly. I feel like this council is consistently stuck in a rut and, you know, we've known for a long time that money was, that we've run out of money basically, and that this was an issue. And different people have tried to fix it different ways, many different things have happened over the years. And here we are, and I feel like we're not listening to the professionals, which we should be doing. And we are listening to our citizens. I know we all are, and we're all doing our best, and we all want what's best for this community, and I just, I feel so frustrated that we can't move forward. Um, I feel that we need a public safety fee to allow us more time, um, to get something done, because I feel that once we make a commitment to have a fee to move forward and, um, once we make a commitment to have a fee to move forward and, um, really find more solutions, we're going to do that. I feel we have a strong team for that and I feel that's what we need to do. Um, and I really just want to move forward. We've been stuck on this for so long. And I just, I feel like we're just not moving forward and we need to. And I'm very, very frustrated. And I would really like to discuss a fee. I think a fee is important. I would like to look at the power slide that we saw in our packet and really start discussing what that means. Um, because I, I am in, I agree with having a fee at this point. I think we need it. We need the services for our citizens to me and people that visit our community. And I would just like to see us be able to move forward.
Could someone from the public ask a question on procedure?
Not Karen, please. Please mute yourself. Thank you.
Sorry.
I appreciate what you said, Bobby. Um, go ahead, Audi.
Okay. Uh, I kind of would like to see uh, the information that Dawn has put together and have the two of them get Eric and her get together and find out what's going on. Because she's saying this is taken right out of the budget, but the numbers, so if it's taken right out of the budget numbers, then somebody in here is not doing right. So I think it'd be best interest to us to have, uh, Dawn get with our budget person, Eric, and go over it together and explain. And that way they could hash it out and bring it to our meeting. Until then, there's a, there's a lot of money. There's a big difference in her and I, I, I know that Dawn looked at her stuff real careful and goes over it. And I don't think she's exaggerating. Uh, I, I don't know where the problem lies. Somebody's forgot something in there somewhere. So that's my proposal that uh, Dawn takes her information to Eric and they both go over it and hash out and see what's going on. And I'd like to see a copy of that to all the counselors and their findings when they find it, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Audi. Go ahead, Melissa.
Yeah, I, uh, I know where I, I think I understand where Dawn is coming from and where what she means by the numbers and what her suggestions are. And while I don't disagree with Dawn, um, I feel that I'm scared that if we cut it too tight, we're going to lose our public safety services or even a portion of what we have left is too much to lose. I think it's time for a compromise. I think we need to. I personally should probably apologize for, I don't know, maybe my misunderstandings. Maybe the politicizing of all of this or I don't know. I just don't know, but I think it's time for a compromise and, um, I think I I agree with Bobby. We need to move forward.
Thank you, Melissa. Um, uh, yeah, I, you know, I appreciate everything you have all said. Um, and, you know, just to to put it in a nutshell here, um, we do need to compromise. We do need to come to the point where we can say, yes, we know we have a shortfall. And, you know, Brian's, Brian's addition is is not wrong when you say this is how much we get in property taxes. This is how much it costs to run these services. Obviously, you know, we don't have enough and we we all know that. Um, and I, you know, while I appreciate all the detailed work that has gone into bringing numbers to us um, like, like Counselor Whitney, I have to say that, you know, I have to listen to my finance director. He is a professional. I know that the numbers that are being brought to us are not false. And that is not to say that the numbers that, um, Counselor Kenyon is bringing up are false. Um, you know, accounting is one of those things and it depends on how you look at it and where you put it. But at this point, because those numbers are so far apart, um, what that has done is skewed the community. Um, and regardless of where we go with this, there is always going to be those in the community and hopefully not those on council who will insist that we're using false numbers. We have to have some common ground that we can all agree to and agree to the numbers before us. If we move forward with a compromise where we do not agree to at least the base numbers, we will not be able to put a bow on this and say we've done our best. That is my biggest concern. The level of trust in our community is always a bit tenuous and that's not a bad thing. Um, we have been reminded repeatedly that we have been led astray. We have done things that aren't exactly right. Um, but not because it was malicious. But it serves us to make sure that as we move forward and as we compromise, and I love that word, Melissa, thank you. Um, and find a solution that we also agree on what the basis of that solution is. So, um, Counselor Whitney, you said, as well as you, Counselor Bjornson, talked about, it's time to talk about what this public safety fee should be. Where is it? My concern here is that as we discuss, so as we discuss the value of the public safety fee, should it be sixteen dollars? Should it be twenty-five dollars? Should it be thirty-one dollars? As we begin to discuss that number, those numbers translate into into real dollars for our employees. They transfer into real dollars for our infrastructure and the way we run, and it translates into real dollars into our public safety. So this isn't just a, a, a word game that turns into dollars on paper. It turns into money and a paycheck. So we need to be really careful about this, really careful. Um, I, I mean, we can talk about the number, what it should be. You know, you all know how I feel. I'm willing to go with whatever, with the number that is recommended by the city administrator because because I do have faith in that, but I'm also willing to compromise. But not to the point where it's not enough to get us through. So, um, let's work on that. Work, what we can do to become confident in the numbers that we are making decisions upon. Melissa, your hands up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. I don't know if I said it quite clearly enough, but I don't believe for one second that Dawn's numbers are inaccurate. I think that she's looking at them from a different perspective is what I'm seeing. And I understand her perspective and it makes sense to me. Um, but like I said, if we cut it down to the nitty gritty, I'm worried about losing services. So I just wanted to clarify that, that I don't believe for a second that Counselor Kenyon has led the community astray or us astray in any way.
Agree with you, Counselor. Um, neither, neither our finance director or any of us, as we've been pinching numbers and looking at them are trying to lead anybody astray, but it is a matter of how you look at them. Um, and making sure we have accurate, um, translations of them. Dawn, go ahead. And then Audi, I see your hand too.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out that I think we should stay on task as far as, um, the way these items are presented to us in the agenda. Right now, I feel like we are on the thirteen point one, which is the discussion of the ordinance. And then if we conclude that, then I feel like it would be appropriate to go in and discuss about how much the fee would be. Do you agree, Mayor?
I do and I don't, but at the same time, um, uh, we do have an agenda. Yes, Counselor Kenyon, I am aware of that. Thank you. Um, but I do kind of want to know where everybody, where everyone is headed. I don't also want to bring something up to a vote, have it, um, have it voted down and then I can't bring it back up in six months, which is part of our rules. So, um, I think it was important to really listen to, um, what our council is thinking and and feeling about this before we proceed, which is why I initiated this conversation. Counselor Spleedoff, go ahead.
Yes, I, I see that on the packet that, uh, he's asking for, for a, that Brian's asking for a thirty dollar that would bring us out. But looking at, uh, Eric's graph, uh, he's saying a thirty-two dollar would make it even. So what's the difference? I mean, why are we asking for thirty if it's, if if Eric says this is going to be thirty-two?
Thank you, Audi, for that question. And let's hold that question until we actually get into the discussion of what it, whether or not, uh, what the amount would be if we do indeed choose to go to the public safety fee. Um, so Dawn, let's, um, per your suggestion, let's go ahead and move forward with thirteen point one. Um, and we're going to go ahead and do this formally. So Brian, will you go ahead and introduce this agenda item that we've already begun to talk about?
Yes, it's, uh, thirteen point one ordinance nine thirty-seven establishment of a public safety fee for three years. Looking for a motion from the floor to adopt. So the budget committee has met and, uh, the need for revenue, uh, was, uh, was stipulated or put forth to continue public safety services, functions and materials, police patrols, ALS, transportation and fire protection. This ordinance structures the fee, which will expire on July first, twenty twenty-four. And the amount of the fee will be set by the schedule of fees resolution each year. And since we've already passed the schedule of fees for this year, we, this would amend that schedule. Um, the fiscal impact cannot be determined until the amount of the fee is established. So there's options here with ordinances and how you calendar them. You can take the first reading, uh, either in full or by title. Um, you can enact the ordinance tonight by unanimous vote after being read in full and by title. Or you cannot consider ordinance nine thirty-seven. So staff recommends option two and, uh, the motion's there before you.
Thank you, Brian. So counsel, uh, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
Go ahead, Audi.
I move we adopt option three, not to consider ordinance nine thirty-seven.
Do I hear a second? I mean, no second, that dies. You're muted, Dawn. Dawn, you're muted.
I see that. I was trying to get to that part on my screen. I apologize.
Second of all. No problem. I, I don't know what you were trying to say, though, so.
I second.
Counselor Kenyon second that. Um, the motion before you. Then is a motion that we do not consider ordinance nine thirty-seven. Typically, we do not vote on not considering ordinances. Um, we just don't bring them up, but, uh, I do want to open this for a discussion. I hope that Counselor Spleedoff and Counselor Kenyon understand that if we do not consider this, we cannot bring it up for another six months. Um, and that eliminates any ability for us to do a public safety fee um, in any, at any level, be it ten dollars or thirty-two dollars. Um, so there, any, any other further discussion? Seeing no discussion. And the motion is on the floor. Go ahead. Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Mayor, I do see Melissa's hand up.
Thank you. Melissa, go ahead.
Yeah, I apologize. I, um, forgot at the beginning of this that I need to declare a potential conflict of interest um, because I'm on the volunteer roster at the fire department. Sorry, I'm a little late in that, but I wanted to get it in before any vote.
Thank you, Melissa. I should have actually asked for that since we know that we will. So Counselor Hollitt, I believe you have something to say also.
Thank you, Mayor Holston and Counselor Bjornson. I also declare there an actual conflict of interest as my husband works for the city of Oak Ridge under a collective bargaining agreement. I will not be voting or discuss, and I have not discussed.
And that's acknowledged. Um, thank you for saying that. Counselor Whitney, go ahead.
Um, I just want to express my extreme frustration with this. By doing this, we are, we are putting our city at such extreme risk. There is no way we are going to be able to do this and not have extreme cuts everywhere. There's, uh, it just, I just cannot see that happening. I just I, I, there's just no words to express how disappointing and how frustrating this is. I, I feel like we are failing our community by doing this. And, you know, I, I just, um, the words are there, but I just can't say them because they're not appropriate, but I, I feel like we're just, we're failing our community. We're failing our duty by doing this. And that is on us. When we see the ramifications of this decision, it's on us as, as a team, as a council. Um, and it's very disheartening and very upsetting, very discouraging. And I don't know what else to say.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. Counselor Bjornson and Counselor Hollis, I both see hands up, but so Counselor Bjornson, go ahead.
I just have to say I disagree with this. I think the compromise we need to come to is the number of the fee at this point. I've done a lot of soul searching in the last few weeks. I don't want a fee. I don't like it. I still don't like it. I'm not going to like it, but I feel like we cannot, 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 cannot lose the services that are so vital to our community and feel that I was elected um, because I was very strong supporter of public safety. That's basically, if you want to call it that, that's what I ran on. And at this point, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor Bjornson. Counselor Hollis, I'm assuming you just left. Okay, good. No problem. My, I knew you weren't going to speak, but I, I didn't want to, um, ignore your hand either. No problem. Counselor Kenny? Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to say that I feel like as a council, if this ordinance fails, it is our, uh, duty to direct our city administrator in how to make cuts. We do not have to do the public safety cuts that he has proposed. And that's what my proposal is. Thank you.
Um, I would just respond to that in that, uh, we know we need a public safety fee. We know we need one and, and it's our, and, uh, um, you know, we do need to come to a compromise as to what that level will be. Um, that the proposal that was put before us by our city administrator, I respect. Um, I am, I see the validity in it, but I am also willing to compromise on that and, um, and, uh, adjust it. That is our job as a council to do. Um, but no one gets anywhere with, um, with, uh, compromise if we draw lines in the sand. And, uh, and I am very disappointed at this, um, at, at this vote. Um, so I don't see any other hands, so I'm going to ask Jackie to call for a vote. We are voting, and by the way, what we're voting on is a motion to not consider this ordinance nine thirty-seven of adopting a public safety fee and establishing an effective date. Counselor Spleedoff?
I means I vote for options for right?
Yes. Counselor Bjornson?
Nay.
Counselor Kenyon?
Hi.
Counselor Coker?
Nay.
Mayor Holston?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. And we have a counselor that has a conflict of interest and is not voting. So that that fails. Having considered this and having had it fail, is there a, is there any counselor who wishes to do a a motion on this again?
Sorry, I can't read the whole motion. There it is. I moved we adopt ordinance nine thirty-seven, adopting a public safety fee and establishing an effective date.
Would you? There are three options as far as taking the first reading, either in full or by title, enacting the nine thirty-seven by unanimous vote after being read in full and by title. I don't think that would end up being an option.
Take the first reading of the ordinance nine thirty seven, either in full or by title.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. Do I hear a second? I second that. Counselor Whitney made the motion. Mayor Holston seconded it. Do we have any discussion? Jackie, will you call for a vote?
I think we have to read this ordinance first, Mayor.
I'm sorry. My apologies. You're right. Having just said those words out loud, we do need to read it.
The the council rules or procedures state that it may be read by title only if no counselor present at the reading requests that the ordinance be read in full. And that one week before they copy the ordinance has been provided to each council member and available in City Hall. And both of those have happened. Or the they've been provided, so it's up to the council if unanimous that they want it read by title.
Would you like this read read by title or full fully? Like it read by by title only? Please, I'll go through and and ask, okay? So this is by title only. Counselor Bjornson?
I'd like to read in full.
That would be a no, but not by title. Okay.
Correct.
We can stop there, Americans.
Yeah, we can stop there. Thank you. All right. So we're gonna read this in full. Brian, I'm happy to to tag team, but my throat's pretty bad, so go for it.
Okay, City of Oak Ridge ordinance nine thirty-seven, ordinance adopting a public safety fee and establishing an effective date. Whereas the Oak Ridge City Council has determined the need for revenue to allow the city of Oak Ridge to continue to offer public safety services, functions and materials, including full-time police patrols, advanced life support, ambulance, transport, and fire protection services. And whereas the purpose this ordinance is to safeguard, facilitate, and encourage the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens and the business of the city. And whereas the council finds a continuous and consistent general government program offering full-time police patrols, fire protection, ambulance transport provides a multitude of economic and social benefits to the public, including but not limited to reduction of the incidence of crime, effective response to police calls, and other public safety situations, enhanced protection of persons and property. Whereas the council held a public meeting and received public comment related to the public safety fee on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, and whereas the Budget Committee held public meetings and received public comment regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget, which included expected revenue from the proposed public safety fee. And whereas the Bu- Budget Committee approved and recommended a budget to the council to maintain current staffing levels, making various cuts within the general fund and adding the new public safety fee. Now, therefore, City of Oak Ridge ordains as follows. Section one, Establishment. The City Council of the City of Oak Ridge establishes a public safety fee as set forth in the attached exhibit and shall be effective with billings on November first, twenty twenty-one. Severability, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, and or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid, unenforceable, and or unconstitutional, such as such invalid, unenforceable, and or unconstitutional section, subsection, sentence, clause, and or portion will A, yield it to a construction permitting enforcement to the maximum extent applicable by permitted by applicable law, and B, not affect the validity, enforceability, and or constitutionality of the remaining portion of this ordinance. Section three, Correction. This ordinance may be corrected by order of the City Council to cure editorial and or clerical errors. And ordinance shall be effective, and the signatures and votes are below, not filled in. You're muted, Mayor.
Okay, I'm back up. Thank you, Brian. Having read the ordinance in full, nine thirty-seven, Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Counselor Coker? Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney? Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Nay.
Counselor Kenyon?
Nay.
Passes. Thank you, counsel. Let's move on then to thirteen point one or thirteen point two, excuse me. Be a minute to get there. All right. Brian, will you read this, please?
Uh, one one comment, you know, since the ordinance is not in effect and not needs a second reading, I'm not sure of the the reason to to consider thirteen point two unless it's just a discussion item.
Okay, I appreciate that. And and I think you're accurate. It it can be a discussion item. Counsel, are you wanting to go ahead and have a discussion about the the public safety fee and see where we are with it and what our general feelings are about this? Is that something you'd like to do? Go ahead and unmute yourselves.
Well, you know, it's eight twenty-four. And we still have another agenda item, right?
We do. We can move on to the public employee handbook if you'd like.
Yeah, I think I feel like we should move on and and I think the more I think about how this meeting has progressed tonight, um, I don't know if Eric's in this meeting or not, but I think it would be really good to get a solid date step for Dawn to meet with Eric and Brian to go over her numbers and really get that information hammered out before we discuss this. That way we're all on in a better mindset, hopefully, to really have more meaningful discussion.
I appreciate that. Counselor Kenyon, I see a hand up. Go ahead.
Um, I I was gonna say, well, I have two things. One is I I'm not sure I understand why we wouldn't be able to consider this resolution tonight. It's it's completely separate from oh, for the amount. I see as whereas ordinance nine thirty-seven. So in other words, because it's not official. So does this, so does this mean that we have to wait for the thirty days or whatever it is for the ordinance to come into effect before we can discuss this resolution for for the fee?
I would say.
It would mean that we would.
CA, my my position would be that once you have the second reading and another successful vote to adopt, at that point, you could just move directly to discussing the fee because you know it's going to come into effect thirty days hence. So we're gonna have to adjust that date in the ordinance, though, I I would think, to probably December first.
Right, so then I would say, yeah, we could skip this, but I also have something else. I just need a second to come back to it. So I'll put my hand up again.
Spleedoff, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that like Bobby was saying, we need to have a chance for Dawn to get around with Eric and administrator and get everything straight. So it makes the public out there know what's going on, so. So it doesn't look like there's such a big gap. So everybody comes together and stuff before we try to do anything here. And like you said, that we probably need a second reading first before we even go on with this.
Thank you, Counselor Spleedoff. Counselor Coker?
Just wanted to add, I too would like to see Dawn's figures before we go into actually trying to decide what the fee is gonna be.
Thank you, Counselor Coker. Counselor Kenyon, do you have thoughts together?
Um, yes, I'm actually I'm not sure how to say this, but I appreciate that everyone wants to see my numbers. However, our city administrator is suggesting the full fee, and that's what we're supposed to be considering. So we've already discussed in the beginning of August, the reductions based on the actual beginning fund balances being adjusted. And it doesn't sound like the administration is willing to consider that, so I'm just, I'm just really confused as to why it would be helpful now to to consider my information. I mean, I'm feeling like the council's not interested in that anyways.
I think the council just said they were interested in that because, and Audi, you put it, you put it well. There is such a discrepancy between the numbers that it is council's due diligence to see why. Why is there a discrepancy between those two numbers so that we can accurately make a decision as to what the level should be of this public safety fee that we that we are are going to put into place? So yes, absolutely. If if indeed you're not, you're not comfortable going through those numbers, is that what you're saying or or what?
Well, I guess then I would ask, I mean, I could send this document to everyone, but
I think what council would like is that you you take those numbers and sit down with our finance director, and we would like to know why there is such a difference between the two. I mean, as a council, I think we've all said, why is there such a huge difference? Why do you come up with a number that is so small and his comes up with a number that is so significantly significantly larger so that we can make a decision? And like we have all said, it may just be because we're looking at it from one side of the fence or the other side of the fence, but in order to, in order to have confidence in what we're about to do and for our community to have confidence in it, I want to know why there's a difference in the numbers.
So so then based on that, it is actually two different ways of looking at it. You know, my way of looking at it is that we could make some reductions that don't have any effect on public safety. And the city administration and finance directors' way of looking at it is that we would, that, you know, we would have to cut, make all these cuts to public safety. So it's just a difference in opinion there. So I think it's the council's responsibility to decide where they want to make the cut. Or, well, it sounds like that's why I'm confused. It sounds like we we're not interested in discussing that. We want to just implement a fee.
No, that's not at all what the council is saying. What we're seeing is there are, there is significant difference between the numbers that you say we are shortfall and the numbers that the administration is saying we're shortfall. And we have to make up the difference either way, but we want to know how much of a difference we're about to make up.
There's not a difference in the shortfall, though. It's on how you look at it.
All right. It's in how we look at it.
We could we could use the actual beginning fund balances, which would make a significant change. Right? We've already discussed that in August. That would drop it almost in half.
When we talked to Eric and we sat down at a work session, we made some changes to what was there. We asked to see what those new numbers would be after we had the close of the year, and we did that. And we looked at that.
We talked about it, but since then, Brian has made the suggestion that we go back to the five hundred and forty thousand dollar number. Do you see?
I do. I do see that, but I do think that we need to have some some sort of compromise and meeting of the minds here on the numbers that we're talking about, or we will never have the trust of our community. I don't think that's unfair to ask us, ask you, Counselor Kenyon, to sit down with the finance director, bring it back to us, which is what several counselors have asked, and show us the differences. What are the differences?
Okay, I'm gonna say I'll do that, but I'm just saying that I I don't see where the finance director and myself coming to an agreement is gonna help the council. It's up to the council.
I think it will help the council significantly. Okay, thank you. Counselor Kenyon or Counselor Whitney, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, so I just want to clarify that we will be able to see Dawn's documents, correct? Because I thought that's what we agreed to earlier in the meeting.
Yes.
Thank you. And so, and I know for me, I can't exactly know what she was looking at and the direction she was looking at without seeing her doc, her documents, because I'm very visual. And then, you know, and she said she looked at the numbers for what, the last five years? And her numbers were something different than what Eric has.
No.
And so so, um, I I would really like to see what she has, and I think it would be great if it were a part of the record because it's been such a big discussion in this meeting. It would be good for it to be part of the public record as well.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
All right. So I think what we want to do then is 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 move on to thirteen point three, and this is the employee handbook. Okay, Brian, can you go ahead and tell us what this is all about?
Sure, this is thirteen three, and it's a resolution eleven twenty twenty-one. And it's a revision to the current employee handbook. And that was an exhibit. And I also included a link in this to the the old one. We're looking for a motion from the floor to adopt it so that the staff periodically reviews the employee handbook for needed updates. And this revision was developed in consultation with the city's insurance company. And I pointed out some significant changes. This employee handbook really is is a welcome aboard book for a new employee that kind of tells them what the rules of the road are and how he, if he has a problem, how to take care of it. It's not a place where you go into operating procedures and and CIS found a bunch of that in our current existing handbook and actually rolled them into a SOP manual, standard operating procedures manual, so which would be used internally in the staff to to sort of pass on how, what those procedures are. So if you have a turnover, person can walk in and and figure out how to do their job. So your options here are to adopt it or to not adopt it. And we're recommending option one. And the motions before you.
Bye, guys.
Can you, there we go. I move we adopt the City of Oak Ridge twenty twenty-one Employee Handbook.
Just Counselor Coker, I'll second. Motion, Counselor Coker seconded it. Is there any discussion, Council?
Yes, there is.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
I was reading through, through this, and here it says administrative leave. All full-time, regular exempt employees will receive 40 hours of administrative leave per year, in addition to the city's vacation and irregular paid holidays. These 40 hours of administrative leave may be used throughout the year on an hour-by-hour basis. How come we're, how come we're doing 40 hours on top of their vacation?
Administrative leave is a, is a typical function. I think, if you said that's non-exempt, Brian, is that only, is that, I always forget the difference.
Let me, let me, see if I can explain it. So, non-exempt employees, in other words, employees that are in the union, get overtime. And as a way to sort of get employees, or more flexibility in scheduling, they created a term called comp time, which is a way to pay employees in a different way. So exempt employees are salaried employees, so it doesn't matter how much they work, they could work 80 hours a week and they still get the same salary. But the expectation is, is that technically they're only paid to work 40 hours a week, so they would take what, what the old handbook called comp time to make up for those extra hours they worked. But CIS pointed out that we're incorrectly using that term. The correct term is, is admin leave. And you put the hours, number of hours in there, so there's some, some sort of, it's constrained, and those hours expire annually, so they, they don't, you can't carry them on. So it's a way of allowing exempt employees who typically work longer hours to, because they're in managerial positions, to make up for those hour, extra hours they work. Does that make sense?
We lost you, Brian.
Did you hear any of that?
Are you still there?
Just the last-
We got to the, just the last part we didn't hear. It's a way for, for exempt employees to make up, and then I didn't hear anymore.
To make up, or take time, that they work extra out, when they've worked extra hours, to make up for those extra hours, to average a 40-hour week. So that's kind of what that's hopefully doing.
So that was called comp time, then?
Incorrectly, it was in the old handbook.
Is that right?
Comp time.
Okay, okay.
It's not a new benefit, it's just a different benefit. It's just, it's just worded differently.
Okay. Because I thought I read down, I did, and premedit out that there is a comp time also on top of the administrative leave.
That's for non-exempt employees. So exempt employees are admin leave, non-exempt employees are comp time.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Whitney, go ahead.
Oh, that's an old hand, sorry.
Okay. Counselor Kenyon, go ahead.
Thank you. So then, Brian, how would this new wording affect, what I have always heard is called an admin leave, as if someone is out of work, maybe for an investigation of some kind, or a behavioral issue of some kind? Would this terminology affect that? Would they be restricted to only 40 hours of administration, administrative leave?
No, when you put someone on, under an investigation, they go on an administrative leave of absence. This is just straight admin leave. And currently, in our pay, our time sheets, we track, all the employees track regular time and comp time. For the exempt, this would just change the comp time column to admin leave.
Thank you, Brian.
So, one more thing I wanted to clarify is that, basically, comp time is, you take time off and you still get paid for it.
If you're a non-exempt employee, yes.
And/or exempt would get it now, it's up to 40 hours under this new policy.
But it's only if you've worked in excess of a 40-hour week, or a 40, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Audie, is that a new hand, or?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead.
So, nothing on you, Brian, or anything. I won't ask the question. So you're our administrator. Would you also get that 40 hours if you work over your 40-hour week?
Every exempt employee gets the 40 hours of administrative leave, including me.
Okay.
So this isn't a new policy, this is just a change in language, so that we're, we're consistent that CIS recommended, correct? We're not adding a new, a new benefit.
No, no, this is not a new benefit. This is in accordance with how CIS structured it.
Yeah, got it. That's what I thought. Okay, any other questions, Council? All right. Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Nurse Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Coker. Counselor Coker.
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Council, that passes. And it is 8:45. Let's move to public comment. Remind everybody once again, that if you know how to raise your hand, please do so, and I will acknowledge you. If you don't know how to raise your hand, then I will ask you to unmute and just say your name, so I can put you in the queue. So right now, I see Trudy has a hand up. Trudy, go ahead, please.
Trudy Hammond, 47752 Berry Street. The city administrator and the finance director holds a puzzle piece to a giant puzzle. Counselor Kenyon holds a piece of the puzzle. Both pieces fit the same spot. One paints a prettier picture. So I appreciate the fact that Counselor Kenyon has gone through and researched and drafted up the, the difference, and is willing to put extra time in to crunch numbers, and, and hopefully, in that process, since there's gonna be a fee, that it, it is a genuine, authentic, fair fee. The other thing I was wondering was, do we still have an officer on administrative leave of absence?
Yes, could you?
Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Trudy. Karen, I see that you've unmuted yourself. Did you want to make public comment?
Yes, I, I've, this is the first time that I've participated this way, and I'm not sure how to raise my hand.
Not a problem. Karen, just identify yourself and give us, give us your address.
Karen Thompson. My, my address is 76352 Rock Road, here in Oak Ridge.
Thank you, go ahead.
I just want to express some appreciation for some of what happened. In particular, I also want to say, Dawn, to Dawn, that I appreciate so much the work that she has done. I feel like the public voted down the levy, the measure that was put up related to public safety, in an enormous majority. And I think that, like the city administrator said that we were kicking the can down the road again, but I think the opposite is true. I think that Oak Ridge, and not the people that are currently in the administration, but a lot of people have kicked the can down the road for a long time, as far as spending more than we make. And I think that the fact that Dawn and some of the other counselors have stood up for and said what the public said, which is, no, we do not want that public safety fee, or the amount that was, that was suggested. I think the fact that Dawn did the research means that now there is going to be a meeting, and hopefully, there's not going to be a $30 public safety fee, and that both people from the community and also from the city administration are gonna look in a more creative way at what the public really wants. I, I feel like just, I think that's the reason why we're doing this, is Dawn's work and also the, the counselors that stood up in an unpopular way and said, no, not, we're not gonna just pass that fee. So, I guess I just want to, I appreciate how the entire council tonight has, has made decisions, because I think we're gonna come out with an outcome that the community can live with this way.
Thank you, Karen. Go ahead and mute yourself again. Let me look and see if there's anybody else. So anybody else who wishes to make a comment before I close out the meeting? I'm scanning if you, okay. All right, well, so, it is, it is 8:49. We are going to conclude this meeting. Before we conclude it, I just want to thank Council for all the efforts that they have put into it. Counselor Hollitt, I see your hand, go ahead.
I have a feeling I'm gonna say what you were about to say, Kathy. Also, I'll be quick. As someone that has not been speaking, I just want to tell you guys how hard, heavy my heart was tonight, listening to you guys. And I know the, the position that you're all in, having to do this, and the, the people that are gonna be happy with Council, and the people that are gonna be really upset with Council. So I just wanted to say to all of you guys, thank you for being professional tonight, and I just really feel for you guys. I know that was a hard one, but I appreciate the dialogue and everything everybody had tonight. And I do know that you guys all have the citizens' best interest in safety, and being progressive, and all those things in, in, in the best interest. So, thank you, guys. That was a hard one tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Hollitt. Yeah, you're exactly right. That's about where I was going to. It's not easy to, you know, to look at things and know we're looking at them from different sides of the fence, adding things up differently, putting emphasis on something, then someone has emphasis on something else. It's not an easy thing to do. All of the counselors spend an awful lot of time reading through material, looking at information, and sometimes it's easy to digest, sometimes it's not easy to digest. And the purpose of the council, and the direction then, is to, is to find the answers. Sometimes that means going to your city administrator, asking questions, finding out, what does that mean? Asking questions of, of AL-COG, they can help you with things. Doing your own analysis, if you feel that that is something that you can come to a good, but, a good answer with. But the important thing in all of this is that we, we really have to be a team. We have to know that while we'll disagree as we walk down the road, we will. But we still have to move down the road. And I hope that this is, I hope that our next meeting will see us move even further, so that we can get on to some of the more important, not more important, but additionally important items that have been sitting on the side, waiting while we do this. So thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. Sleep well. Stay out of the smoke if you can. Good night. Oh, this meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.